So today's program you see is an MS Views Now program. It is a town hall meeting. And what we're doing with this town hall meeting is first off, Dr. Boster has agreed to do this every other month for this entire year coming up. All right, so we'll be able to do this. So if you're here today, you could be here every other month and see what's going on. Okay. And for today's program though, Dr. Boster is going to speak briefly about smoldering MS. You could see I don't have to read it all to you. Otherwise, I could read it to you if you can't read. And the smoldering MS, the B-cell therapies, biosimilars, cellular therapies, some new stuff. All right, I'm just using a comfortable S name for all this. All right. But you know, we are, and speaking about S names, we're sponsored tonight by Sanofi and Sandoz. Thank you, Dr. Boster, and thanks for being here.
My pleasure. Thank you for having me, Stuart. And as always, you know, thank you, MS Views and News, for creating these educational opportunities. I really look forward to them. Good evening, everyone. Howdy, hello, hi. Thank you for joining in this evening as we start to talk about sort of the new frontier of multiple sclerosis. Today, I'm going to be talking about MS therapeutics, the MS landscape from the lens of a revised understanding of MS pathology. Very, very often, when I sit with a family at the Boster Center for MS and I'm talking to them about MS, it strikes me that they haven't had a complete description of MS. They haven't necessarily had a complete understanding of what goes on in multiple sclerosis. And I'm delighted that the term smoldering MS is becoming mainstream. I'm delighted that increasingly, we're hearing discussions about this concept. I'm going to talk to you a little bit about what smoldering MS is, how it fits into the MS landscape, how it's paving the way for a better understanding of new therapeutics. And then I'd like to spend a few minutes, if I may, talking about some of those new therapeutics that I'm very excited about. So multiple sclerosis, at its core, is an autoimmune condition. The immune system is the part of the human body that fights off foreign invaders. So when you come in contact with a virus, or a bacteria, or a fungus, parasite of some sort, your immune system identifies that as a foreign invader, not part of your own body, and it tries to kill it. And it uses inflammation to kill the virus or the foreign invader. The immune system has a tough job because it has to be able to identify that foreign invader and differentiate it from you. So as the immune system surveys the human body and it sees part of you, it just says, well, hello, me, and it leaves you alone. And sometimes, unfortunately, the immune system can make an error in judgment. And it will, by accident, identify part of your body as being a foreign invader. And when that happens in medicine, we call that an autoimmune condition, where the immune system is attacking part of you, even though it's really not supposed to. And there's a lot of autoimmune conditions. For example, when the immune system attacks the pancreas, we call that diabetes. When the immune system attacks the joint, we call that rheumatoid arthritis. Multiple sclerosis is an autoimmune condition where the immune system attacks the holiest of holies, the supercomputer that runs the body, the brain, and the superhighway, the spinal cord, that takes the information from the computer down to the body and back up. And traditionally, we tell people that the kind of problems that they can experience with MS are caused by these focal attacks by the immune system. So what I mean by that is, if the naughty autoreactive immune system attacks the nerve that runs your eyeball on the left side and causes an optic neuritis, inflammation of the optic nerve, then you're going to lose vision in that eye. It's going to hurt like the Dickens when you try to move your eye. And that's a very classic attack presentation in the setting of MS. And if you don't regain all of your vision in this example, let's say that, God forbid, you have an optic neuritis and you go and you're completely blind. And then afterwards, you recover, but only partly. So now maybe your vision has returned somewhat, you can see colors, you know, but your visions may be 20 over 200, you're legally blind. You have accrued a degree of disability. And the traditional teachings of MS kind of stopped there. And that was the original understanding of how someone gets worse in MS. We call that raw, relapse-associated worsening. Here's the deal. That's one of two ways that people impacted by MS can become worse. One way is raw, relapse-associated worsening, like I just described, where you have an attack and you don't fully recover. But there's a second way. And that second way is really, really important to understand. We call that second way PIRA, P-I-R-A. See, neurologists were a bunch of nerds and we like to make up terms for things. So we coined this PIRA, progression independent from relapse activity. So in English, the human with MS gets worse, but they haven't had an attack. And it turns out that upwards of 25 to 30-some percent of diagnosed relapsing MS patients, earlier in the disease process, they can experience PIRA. And so in fact, there's two ways that people impacted by MS can get worse on a neuro exam. Incomplete recovery from an attack, raw, and PIRA, progression independent from relapse activity. Now, this is a very, very important concept to understand for a couple of reasons. Number one, it's accurate, it's honest. And all too often, I've heard stories of patients that will go to see a well-intended neurologist, and the patient will say, doctor, I'm not doing well. And the doctor will say something to the equivalent of, yes, you are, your MRI is stable. And the patient will say, yeah, but I'm having trouble walking. And they'll say, yeah, but your exam's the same. And the patient sometimes feels like cuckoo for Cocoa Puffs. They feel like they're maybe like not understanding, or they're crazy, or maybe they're wrong. In many ways, it makes me feel like the doctor, either on purpose, or more likely not on purpose, is gaslighting the patient. And it's because that doctor is only considering raw as one of the ways that you can get worse. They're not speaking to the fact that people impacted by MS, both early in the disease and later in the disease, both with progressive disease states like primary progressive and secondary progressive MS, and in early relapsing MS, can also experience PIRA. So it's so important that we understand that because it is an accurate reflection of what the human being may experience with multiple sclerosis. There's a second reason why it's really, really important. And that's because if you don't define the problem, if you don't characterize the problem adequately, then it makes it near impossible to study it and try to come up with solutions. So if we don't ever talk about PIRA, if we don't ever define PIRA, if we don't study PIRA, it makes it really hard to develop therapies that can treat PIRA. And so I'm really, really appreciative and I'm glad that the MS treating community is starting to have a better appreciation for this concept. Now, the title of this talk tonight was smoldering MS. And smoldering MS is a umbrella concept which includes PIRA. It really speaks to the underlying pathology of MS. And I'm going to paraphrase a friend of mine, Dr. Gavin Giovannoni. Now, Dr. Giovannoni is a great MS neurologist. He practices at Barts in London, England. And he has been probably one of the most vocal proponents of this concept of smoldering MS. He sometimes says, it's the real MS. And that relapses and new spots on MRI are kind of noise on top of the so-called real MS. And he uses an example of the real MS or smoldering MS, like a shredder, like a paper shredder, which is turned on low and left on. And it's slowly in the background chewing up brain. It's in part responsible for the accelerated brain volume loss, the shrinkage or atrophy that we see in the brain. It's related to the PIRA that I've just been discussing. And it's an umbrella term that I really think has a lot of value. Now, does that mean that all the things that we figured out over the last 20 years are bunk? No, not at all. Does that mean that the therapies that we've been using to treat MS are not effective? No, it doesn't mean that. It just means that those therapies are incomplete and that we, as MS treaters, need to do a better job. We need to up our game and we need to expand our understanding so that we can bring more to the table. Now, there are 28 different formulations of MS drugs currently available by the American FDA. That's a lot of different drugs. And they are not all the same. There are some drugs that we now understand to be what I call low efficacy. So they're okay, they're not great drugs. There are drugs that are considered mid-tier efficacy. And we have some drugs that are considered top-tier efficacy, the most efficacious of all the drugs that we have available. And those would include, in my opinion, things like natalizumab, so Tyroco or Tyssabri. They would include things like anti-CD20s, those are B-cell depleters. Those would be things like rituxan and ocrivis and Keysemta and Briumvi. And it would include things like alentuzumab or Lymtrada. Some doctors would also include some of the pills like mavinclad or cladrobine. Now, these drugs, particularly the monoclonal antibodies, so the Tyssabris and the ocrivis of the world, are considered highly effective drugs. And they are highly effective. They're very, very effective at decreasing attacks, like super good at it. They're very, very effective at decreasing new MRI spots, both the white spots, the so-called T2 hyperintense lesions, and the enhancing lesions. They're also very good at slowing brain volume loss. But they don't adequately treat PIRA. They can treat PIRA, but it's not very well. They don't adequately treat all the components of smoldering multiple sclerosis. And so whereas I'm very, very proud that I've been involved in many of the clinical trials that led to these drugs' approval, I'm very proud that at the Boster Center for MS, we offer these highly effective therapies to families impacted by MS. It's not a cure, it's not adequate to fully take care of the disease, not yet. Sorry, I'm thirsty and that's delicious. So as we think about the future of multiple sclerosis, we need to do more than just decrease inflammation. And I'd like to spend a few minutes with you guys tonight, talking about some of what's coming down the pike. There's a lot of therapies that we've been working on diligently. Some of them are very close to hitting the markets, some of them are a little farther back. And so I'd like to spend a few minutes and talk about BTK inhibitors, anti-CD40 ligands. By the way, I didn't make up any of these terms. And I'd like to talk about a really exciting new therapy which is being developed called CAR-T therapy. So when you think about what B-cell depleters do, rituxan, ocrivis, Briumvi, Keysemta, B-cell depleters kill B-cells. And it turns out that's a really, really effective way to treat MS. Let me explain it to you using an analogy. So I went to a very overcrowded high school in central Ohio called Gehanna-Lincoln. And it was really overcrowded. I think my graduating class had over 700 people in it. And the hallways were very crowded, and as you bustled through the hallway with your backpack on, you'd bump into somebody. And sometimes, when a young boy bumps into another young boy, they get offended. And the only way to solve that dispute is to meet behind B-building at 3:30 and then pound each other and try to, you know, they'll fight. And so I attended some of these social functions, and I noticed that no young pugilist shows up to defend his honor without six of his very best friends coming with him. So he'll show up to fight and all of his buddies are there. Now, in this analogy, the fighter is the T-cell, that's the immune cell that's attacking you. And in the setting of autoimmunity, that T-cell is attacking your brain and spinal cord in the setting of MS. But the T-cell, the fighter, is not able to actually fight unless his buddies, the B-cells, get him riled up. All right. And so what do the friends do? Well, they egg him on, they say, go ahead, man, go ahead, whoop his butt, hold your book back, all look out for the teacher. And his friends kind of get him hyped up to go in and fight. So in the immune system, the T-cell, which attacks the brain and spinal cord, cannot do it unless it's co-stimulated, that's co-stimulation by a B-cell or by a similar cell. And so these B-cell depleters work by depleting B-cells. In the analogy, we murder all of his friends. So when he shows up to fight and he says, oh, wait, my friends aren't here, then he says, I don't want to fight, never mind. And quite literally, by removing the friends, we prevent the guy from fighting, we prevent the T-cell from being able to attack you. That's literally how B-cell depleters work, which turns out to be very, very effective. So that's a great way of decreasing inflammation. That's a great way of decreasing raw, relapse-associated worsening. That's a great way to decrease new MRI lesions, but it's only a so-so way of addressing PIRA. And there's an increased risk of infection when you do that, because you need the B-cells to fight off some certain types of infections. And I want to talk about a new therapy which is actively being developed and it's been studied, it's been studied in phase three trials since 2021, and that's BTK inhibitors. So BTK stands for brutine tyrosine kinase. And a kinase is an enzyme, and these are located inside some of the immune cells. And there's two immune cells that I'll talk about. One of the immune cells are B-cells. So when a B-cell gets stimulated, it causes a bunch of machinery inside the B-cell. So think of them as little machines, these enzymes, to be activated. So you activate the B-cell and all the little machines are activated, and then that B-cell can then stimulate a T-cell. One of those little machines is the brutine tyrosine kinase, the BTK. So a BTK inhibitor enters into the B-cell and breaks the machine. It does not kill the B-cell. It makes the B-cell so it can't communicate. So kind of like plugs it like, la, 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 I can't hear you. And you don't cause B-cell murder, but you prevent the B-cell from stimulating the T-cell. And the reason I'm so excited about that mechanism of action is by doing that, you can impact MS in a way somewhat similar to what B-cell depleters do without the depletion. And so that's an exciting concept, but that's not the only thing that BTK inhibitors do. BTK inhibitors can also enter into the brain. So not just in the bloodstream where the B-cells hang out, but they can enter into the brain. And there's another cell type within the immune system which also has BTK inside of it. And that's a cell that you may not have heard very much about yet, called microglia. So microglia are part of the innate immune response, and they're resident to the brain, meaning they only exist in the brain, you don't see them outside the brain. And when the situation of MS occurs, the microglia massively misbehaves, and it can attack your brain in a way that you don't like. It literally, I always think of like the Incredible Hulk, and it turns into this monster and eats things it's not supposed to, like your brain. We've known for a very long time that not just B and T-cells are involved in MS, but microglia are involved in MS. And we haven't been able to reach them. We haven't been able to get inside the brain and get a hold of them. And BTK inhibitors go inside the brain and they enter into the microglia and they break the BTK in it and they turn them off. They don't murder them, but they turn them off. And this is very relevant to the concept of smoldering MS or to progression independent from relapse activity. This is part of the innate immune response that we think is involved in that, excuse me, in that process. And so it's very, very exciting. Now, there's a bunch of MS manufacturers that have been aggressively developing BTK inhibitors. And we've already had some results come out. And some of them are very, very exciting, and some of them have been a real letdown. Thus far, there's been two sets of clinical trials which have been studying BTK inhibitors in relapsing MS, so in relapsing remaining MS. One of the drugs was called evo-brutinib. And remember, I'm not making these names up. It was developed by a manufacturer studying relapsing MS. And it was compared against a standard-of-care molecule, and it didn't do any better than the standard of care. So it was a negative trial, which is a real bummer, because we were really hopeful that it would work. And so we're not going to see evo-brutinib brought to the American FDA or to the European EMA to seek approval for relapsing MS, because the trial was negative. There's another BTK inhibitor made by a manufacturer who's actually part of the sponsor for this evening, and that's the manufacturer, Sanofi. And that BTK inhibitor is called tolobrutinib. And tolobrutinib was studied in relapsing MS in two trials called the Gemini trials. And at the Boster Center for MS, we participated in the Gemini trials. And in these trials, relapsing patients were given either BTK inhibitor or active comparator. And again, unfortunately, it was an unsuccessful trial. Now, I want to point out that the BTK inhibitors didn't suck, they did a good job, they just didn't do better than the standard of care. And so that was another negative trial. And so that's a real bummer. And I want to say thank you to the patients that participated in those trials. Their efforts were not in vain, because by the grace of their participation, we were able to clarify that these drugs are not going to be the best fit, we don't think, in relapsing MS. But there's a really exciting result. There's another trial, also by the same manufacturer, Sanofi. And this trial is called the Hercules trial. And it studied tolobrutinib, but not in relapsing MS. It studied it in non-progressive secondary progressive MS. So secondary progressive MS is a type of relapsing disease where someone with MS used to have relapses, but they haven't had them in a very long time, and they're experiencing PIRA, they're getting worse without attacks. And in the Hercules trial, we gave these patients either tolobrutinib or placebo. And you might say, well, wait a second, Boster, why placebo? Well, that's because there's no drugs that are FDA-approved for non-relapsing smoldering MS. So when you don't have any drugs that are approved for a condition, you can't test them. And so we tested this against placebo. And again, at the Boster Center, we were very active and we enrolled many patients in this trial, and it worked. It was the first ever success in treating secondary progressive non-relapsing MS. And it was able to decrease progression, PIRA, by 29%, which is a really big deal. Now, this week, there was an exciting announcement made. And that was the announcement by the American FDA that they've granted a fast-track or a breakthrough status to tolobrutinib for non-relapsing secondary progressive MS. What that means is, the FDA identifies that there's a massive need to treat PIRA, to treat smoldering MS, to treat this aspect of MS which has thus far not been treated. And they're going to fast-track the drug to go through the approval process faster. And you may remember during the global viral pandemic, the COVID-19 pandemic, the American FDA fast-tracked the vaccines, so they were approved very, very quickly. And so those of us in the MS space are very excited about this, and our fingers are crossed and I'm very hopeful and I'm encouraged that we may see our very first therapy, FDA-approved to treat non-relapsing progression. And that would be a really, really big deal. And there's other trials that are ongoing, looking at primary progressive MS. So there's a trial called the Perseus trial, again, with tolobrutinib by the Sanofi manufacturer. And they're studying in primary progressive MS. And that trial is going to wrap up by the end of the year. And we're probably going to see data released, I'm going to guess, around the summer or maybe early fall of next year. And so that's a quick update on BTK inhibitors. I then want to talk a little bit about a next generation of drugs called anti-CD40 ligands, which is not a very sexy name. Now, going back to the B-cell and the T-cell, so let's pretend this hand is a B-cell and this hand is a T-cell. The way that they interact is they literally touch, like physically, they touch. And the arm of the B-cell is called the CD40 ligand, all right, not a very nice name, but that's what it's called. And an anti-CD40 ligand binds the arm so that it can't touch the T-cell. And I was explaining that to one of my patients, and she said to me, gosh, Dr. B, that's kind of like a condom. And I thought about it, and she's right. So it's like a B-cell condom, which I thought was a really clever way of describing it. And so at the Boster Center, we're studying a drug called Frexalizumab, which is an anti-CD40 ligand. And we're actively enrolling patients into that trial. And it's very early days, but I'm very, very hopeful and very excited. Now, I also want to talk about a therapy, which is a little bit farther down the line, but it's a really sexy therapy. It's a really, really cool idea. And it's an idea that's been borrowed from cancer called CAR-T therapy. And so CAR-T therapy really stands for chimeric T-cell therapy. So those of you that are mythology buffs, remember the chimera. The chimera was a mythical beast that was, had like the head of a lion and the wings of an eagle and the tail of something else. And it was like a composite animal. And a chimeric T-cell is named after that. So that's what the CAR-T stands for. So in the setting of cancer, you can create a, a therapy where you build a T-cell, which specifically can attack the cancer. So that's really, really neat. It's personalized medical therapy where you take out a cancer from a person and then you build a T-cell, which specifically can attack that cancer. And then you release those T-cells in the human body and they float around and they kill the cancer. And there are, there are CAR-T therapies which have been able to cure individuals' cancers, which is really very exciting. When you think about it, you could instead direct that T-cell to, to attack anything. And what we're starting to do in very early clinical trials is to develop chimeric T-cells, which specifically bind to naughty autoreactive cells in the human body, which can then hopefully go through and ferret out the autoreactive cells in MS and wipe them out. And so that's very, very exciting. I also want to touch on a different revolution in MS. And that's the concept of biosimilars. And so earlier in this chat, I talked about some of the most effective disease modifying therapies. And the ones that I rattled off, so for example, Natalizumab, Tyssabri, or Oclerizumab, or Rituxan, those medicines, they're monoclonal antibodies. They're antibodies, which is a special kind of protein, part of the immune system, which are engineered in a lab and they have a very specific purpose. And the oldest one out there is Tyssabri. Tyssabri is, the, the generic name is Natalizumab. And after a drug has been out for a certain amount of time, about 10 years, it goes off patent. And then another manufacturer can develop a biosimilar. So if we think of Tyssabri as the originator, the first one, the first biologic agent, another company can come and they can develop a, a second biologic agent, which does the same thing. So they make another antibody, which acts and does the same thing that Tyssabri does. And one of the sponsors of this, of this discussion, a company called Sandos, they did that. And they developed a medicine called Tyruco. Now Tyruco is a monoclonal antibody. It's a form of Natalizumab, just like Tyssabri. And they tested it in a really cool clinical trial called the Antelope Trial, where they proved that Tyruco, this biosimilar, works just as well and is just as safe as Tyssabri. And so why are biosimilars cool? They make more options for patients to have better access to therapy. And oftentimes they're in some ways less costly to the family. And so more families can benefit from them. So I'll wrap up this didactic portion of the discussion. In quick summary, I am very excited about where we're headed with MS. I'm particularly excited about the adoption of the concepts of PIRA and the adoption of concepts of smoldering MS. And I'm really excited about how that is paving the way for a new era of therapies. And so thank you for your attention and I'll turn the mic back over to Stuart and his team so we can start a Q and A.
That was awesome. See, I'm so glad I asked you to do this. It's pretty incredible. All right, I'm going to get to some questions online, but I'm going to ask you some other questions first. And that is questions that came in beforehand, like such as, what do we discuss with people that are non-believers of taking MS medications?
So this is unfortunately something that we still see. So, you know, I, I'm a doctor in clinic. I take care of families impacted by MS. And there are still people out there that are declined to consider medicines, which honestly breaks my heart. The way I think about it is that it's, it's our goal to help someone live their best life despite having MS. It's our goal to make MS as boring as possible. And in order to accomplish that goal, I want to bring every tool to bear. It's not an or, like you can pick A or B, it's an and, A and B. And it's not adequate just to diet. It's not adequate just to take a medicine. In order to live our best life, we actually need to do five things. And I sometimes will say, I want you to be five for five and you're fighting against MS. And those five things, from my perspective, are number one, not smoking stuff. Really, that's a colloquial way of saying attention to brain health, addressing cardiovascular risk factors, because unaddressed, smoking speeds up MS. Hypertension, diabetes, these speed up MS. And so if we want to live our best life, we need to address that. It involves number two, exercising as part of your lifestyle, which is not easy to do with MS, but it can be done. Sometimes we need to work with neuro-physical therapists, for example, in order to pull that off. But it can be done. And it's a massively underappreciated form of disease modifying therapy. Number three, we need to eat smart. And you know, you have a lot of videos on your learning channel. I have a lot of videos on my YouTube channel about nutrition and MS and some of the things that we can do there. I hate it when doctors say it doesn't matter what you eat, because it does. Number four is mindfulness. Mindfulness is the, the act of being in the present moment without prejudice. And so, you know, I think once weekly you guys have a yoga online and that's a form of mindfulness. Meditation is a form of mindfulness. Breathing exercises, these are forms of mindfulness, being in the present moment. The fifth one is to take the most effective disease modifying therapy that you're comfortable taking and make sure that it's working. And the reality is doing the four and not all five limits our ability for success. And it really breaks my heart. You know, my Uncle Mark was fixed in a wheelchair with very significant MS before the very first therapy came out. And when those therapies came out, it was too late for him. He started on them, but he, he couldn't move at that point in his, in his life. And so when I see a young person, a vibrant human being, who wants to live their best life and they're not willing to consider a disease modifying therapy, it, it really makes me sad. I used to get really animated and do all kinds of shenanigans and get upset. And, and I, I don't do that so much anymore, but I just have very open, frank conversations. And I tell them, look, I'm not going to kick you out of my clinic because you won't take a therapy. And I'm not going to point my finger and say that you're right, but I am going to be really, really sad as I watch you accrue neurological disability. It's an important point. Thanks for bringing that up.
Great. Thank you for that. Now going on to another thing that's, again, I'm just going to ask some questions before I get to the online questions. You spoke about PIRA. You did not speak about aging and MS. And for the many who are aging, hey, that's me, all right? We need to know, when is it age-related? Or when is it actually something that's been cooking in our brain for a long time and not being addressed by our doctors?
So, so that's a really good point, that as we age, there can be changes biologically and neurologically. And so for example, if you look at a group of people in their seventies, some of them will need a cane. Not all of them, but there will be some people who are in their seventies, for example, that will use a cane. And not necessarily because they have multiple sclerosis. And if you look at a group of seventy-year-olds, more are going to need a cane at seventy than at like, say, twenty. Right? So that's just part of aging. And it begs the question, well, how do I know if a given problem that I have is because of multiple sclerosis or just getting older? Now, in my experience, the vast majority of people, when they ask me that question, are having MS progression and they're kind of blaming it on aging. And that's just my clinical observation, having done this now for nearly two decades. But there's a couple of other ways of trying to sort it out. One way is to think about the age-appropriate norm. Like, so what do we expect from, from the average fifty-year-old? What do we expect from the average sixty-year-old, something like that? And you can actually be kind of fancier about it, because you can do certain tests, like cognitive tests that are compared to age-appropriate controls or physical exams that are compared to age-appropriate controls. And so that's one way to do it. Another way to do it is to look at what you were able to do last year. Sometimes I'll see someone who's in their early fifties and they're losing their ability to walk. And they say, I'm just getting older. No, the average fifty-year-old should, should be able to do that. And so I want to challenge someone to not be ageist with themselves. I want to challenge someone to want to be able to live their best life. And that involves, for example, conditioning, right? So if you take any, anyone and you allow them to become deconditioned, they're not going to fare as well. And that's even more notable in the setting of MS. So it is tricky, but I think that we have to kind of fight against the concept of, ah, you're just getting old. And it's a slippery slope to allow yourself to get worse faster.
Okay, thank you. All right, I'm going to check some questions from online now. What I need to ask everybody to do, and I'm going to change around some of these questions, but you can't make it about yourself. Dr. Boster is not your doctor and even if he was, he can't divulge anything about you being his patient. So please make everything general if you have a question to ask. All right, first person. If a person has been stable for a number of years and is over the age of sixteen, has been offered DMDs for several years, but suspects they are smoldering, what medications are appropriate?
So, so you know, the caveats are, I don't have enough information about that specific person to tell them specifically for them. I can share the things that I will do in a sixty-year-old. I will consider Tyssabri in a sixty-year-old. I will consider a B-cell depleter, like Ocrivis or Kisemtah in a sixty-year-old. Depending on the risk of infection and things like that, I will sometimes consider things like Mavinclad in a sixty-something or Abagio in a sixty-something. Those are probably the, the medicines that I reach for most frequently. And really, it's, it's not so much that they're sixty. It's, it's evaluating the risk benefit of a given medicine in the context of the risk of disease. And when someone says that they haven't been on a drug and, and they're worried about smoldering MS, I want to remind you that even though our current medicines aren't amazing at slowing smoldering MS, they do have an impact. And when you study fifty-five-year-olds and up who stop their medicines, at least a third progress in neurological disability. And so that's evidence enough for me to want to keep on keeping on and treat those people. And so we have a engaged conversation about the risk benefit of the medicine in the context of the risk of the disease.
Okay, thank you for that. Next, a person is asking about diets to cure MS. She hears a lot about it and she wants to know your viewpoints on this.
So we don't have a cure for multiple sclerosis. And if I'm honest with you, I don't think we're going to have a cure for multiple sclerosis in my lifetime. Not because I don't want a cure, I very much want a cure. Not because the, the MS research community doesn't want a cure or that pharma doesn't want a cure. We all want a cure for MS, we're just not there. Our understanding of the immune system is not yet adequate to be able to produce a cure. And there is no diet which can cure MS. Allow me to repeat, there's no diet which has been proven to cure MS. If you, if you go to like a Borders bookstore type place and tell them that you have MS, they'll get all animated and they'll take you over to a section in the store and you'll see all these books about diets for MS. And some of them are written by people that have initials after their name like mine. They're, they're physicians and MDs and PhDs and things like this. But I really, really struggle when they make claims that they can cure the disease, because that has not been proven to be the case. Now, can diet impact MS? Yes. Can diet help make MS boring? Yes. Can diet improve symptoms? Absolutely, they can. But I want to be clear that I don't believe in selling false hope. I spent a lot of time in my clinic talking about nutrition. And I spent a lot of time on YouTube talking about nutrition. So I'm a believer in, in nutrition. And we can talk about those specifics, but, but I want to be very clear that there is no diet out there that has been proven to cure the disease.
Thank you very much. So the next one, I already know the answer that you're going to give, but a person wants to know, totally unrelated to actual MS, other than your, what you do. But this person is no longer, is no longer on social media and she wants to keep up with what you do without being on social media. So give it away, tell them how they can keep up with you.
So, so that's an interesting question. How, how do you learn about me without being on social media? Or how do you keep up to date outside of social media? So, so I will say that social media is an easy way to do it, right? Because just like MSVs and news, a lot of this content is free to the receiver. And so being on YouTube is, is a way to do that. I make YouTube videos every Monday morning. And I do live streams once every, every month. So actually the last Saturday of every month, this Saturday, the 21st, I have a live stream. And, and that's an opportunity from my vantage point to educate, to empower and to energize families impacted by MS. MSVs and News has a YouTube learning channel. And you guys put together really the who's who in MS, bringing the latest and greatest of their own subfields of, of research in MS. And that's a great place to learn about MS. I'm old school and I really like in-person discussions. I was so appreciative, you guys came out to Northern Kentucky just this past weekend. And I met you down in Northern Kentucky and we did a program with, you know, thirty, forty-some people live. And it was so awesome for me to be able to interact with people live. So it doesn't just have to be on the tickety-tickety or on Facebook or on Twitter or Blue Sky or what have you. But those are tools that we can use to do that. And so, you know, I really appreciate someone asking that question.
So I'm going to take that a step further though. And there's a lot of what Dr. Boster does on X or on Twitter, whatever you want to call it. And his postings that he has on there, along with Dr. Bieber and along with Dr. Giovanni that he was talking about, or Gaviani, or I can never say his name. But anyway, I put those onto our blog. Okay, so if you're wanting to know, then you would have to subscribe to our newsletter and make sure that you're getting what comes out every month, because those articles are in there. And you will get to see or read, you know, what it is that he's got. And a lot of his that are videos, we just put the video right into our blog. So when somebody opens up the newsletter, they see all the videos and they could just click on and see what Dr. Boster's talking about. All right, so we all work hand in hand. We want to let you all know what's happening, all right? So that's the main thing. So you don't actually have to be on social media to get the information, but you have to be either subscribe to one of our, one or both of our YouTube channels or you have to be subscribed to the MSVs and News monthly e-newsletters, okay?
Which is, which is free. Which is completely free.
Everything is free. All right, so, um. And by the way, our YouTube channel is about six months behind, which I'll be working on next week and hopefully getting it all up to date now that I'm not traveling for a week. Okay. All right, next. We have, a person is asking, what is PML?
So PML stands for progressive multifocal leukoencephalopathy. And that's a mouthful. PML is a brain infection, which is a very serious brain infection. About 20% of people die from PML, so one in five. And it's a very, very rare brain infection. Prior to the AIDS epidemic, there were 700 cases ever discussed worldwide, ever, in the history of the universe. But in the setting of the AIDS epidemic, where people lost their immune system, we saw PML. And you can also see PML very rarely when patients take certain types of medicines. For example, chemotherapy medicines can sometimes cause PML. For example, Tyssabri can sometimes lead to PML. PML is caused by a virus called the JC virus. Now, back in the ancient days of yesteryear, doctors named things after themselves or after patients. And the JC virus is named after the first patient in whom they discovered it, John Cunningham. So it's a John Cunningham virus. We don't do that anymore. And the JC virus, under normal circumstances, doesn't hurt nobody. Under normal circumstances, and half of people over thirty have been exposed to it, and our immune systems just beat it up all day long, like they bully it. But if you are exposed to the JC virus, and we can test you for that, and you're on a medicine like Tyssabri, there's a small risk of developing PML. And when I say small, I mean like really, really small. So in the first year on Tyssabri, someone's risk might be as low as one thousandth of a percent. So one thousandth of a percent means you take a dollar into a hundred pennies and you take one penny into a thousand slivers and one sliver is their risk. Now, because of various things, how long they're on the, the drug and what their JC virus level is, and whether they've had prior chemo, et cetera, that risk can go up and it can go upwards to one percent. Now, PML is nothing to sneeze at, but I think all too often, we throw the baby out with the bathwater. Because we have to keep in mind the risk of a, a given drug, in this case Tyssabri, and the risk of PML in the context of the risk of MS. I'm much more concerned about undertreated MS and someone getting worse from MS than I am from the risk of PML. Now, that doesn't mean therefore someone who's nervous about it is wrong. I don't feel that as a neurologist, I have the right to tell you that is or is not okay. I feel that instead I have the ethical obligation to teach you the risk profile and then to allow you to tell me how you feel about it. So independent of the numbers, if someone is scared of that PML risk, then we avoid those drugs. And independent of those numbers, if someone is not concerned about it, then we use those drugs. And I'll share a very quick story of a wonderful patient of mine who is in her seventies. She's a retired physician, which is relevant, because she understands risk benefit really well. And she's been on Tyssabri for a very, very long time. And she's cute. She says, honey, when the risk is one in 10, let me know. And that's her risk aversion. And she's a very vibrant human being. She paints, she has show dogs, she's a real cool lady. And nobody could argue that she's not doing well on that therapy and that she doesn't understand that risk. That's a great question.
Great. So thank you for that. In addition to that, another person is asking, what's the difference between PML and acute encephalitis diagnosis?
So encephalitis is a doctor word. Encephalo is Greek for brain. Itis means inflammation. So encephalitis is inflammation of the brain, which typically manifests as being super confused. Right? Acute means it happens right away. So acute encephalitis is a description of an acute, a sudden brain inflammation, which can be caused by a whole bunch of different things. And, and most of them are infections. So an acute encephalitis is not a, the name of a disease. It's a description of a type of disease. And so PML can cause an acute encephalitis. Many, many other things can cause an acute encephalitis.
Okay, thank you. Next question, what research is being done for nerve damage repair?
So the nerve is like a, like an electrical wire. So let me, like, so here's a cord to charge my iPhone, all right? And this cord has like a copper inside of it. And then it's got plastic coating on the outside. And so electricity can run down it or can run into my phone to charge it. And the nerves of the nervous system are really like wires. And so there's various conditions which can damage the nerves. In the periphery, so the peripheral nerves, there's conditions like Guillain-Barre or AIDP or CIDP or neuropathy from diabetes, which can, which can strip the myelin, strip the plastic coating off the wire or break the wire. And that can cause nerve damage. In the brain, we, we don't call them nerves, we call them tracts, but it's really the same thing. The neurons are, are set up in this fashion. And diseases like MS can break the wire or they can strip the plastic coating off the wire. And so one of the things that we do to try to treat that is we try to decrease the inflammation. So the wire is not under attack. And many of the MS medicines we have do a good job of slowing brain damage. Remember MRI lesions are brain damage, that's neuronal damage. But we of course want to go beyond that. And I think what they're getting at in that question is things like remyelinating agents. So if you imagine that we stripped the plastic coating off this wire, we'd want to put the plastic coating back on, right? Because then we could reinforce the wire and then it might work better again. And humbly, we, I got to plug my, my phone back in. Humbly, we can't do that yet. We're, we're not good at doing that yet. We've been working on it and we're getting close. And so there are drugs that are under investigation like Clomasten, which is a cousin of Benadryl, actually. There are drugs like Metformin, which was created for treating diabetes. These drugs might have remyelinating properties. There is a, a compound called Pite 307, which was studied in mice. And it looks like in mice that they may have some remyelinating properties. And so we're starting to get into human testing. So we don't have a remyelinating agent yet, but we're working on it. And I would submit that we're probably less than 10 years off from being there.
Awesome. Thank you for that. Next, I was diagnosed with MS in ninety, nineteen ninety-eight. Forget, we can't say it like that. A person was diagnosed with MS in nineteen ninety-eight and has been on disability since 2003 and have been secondary progressive since 2010 to 20 or 2015. Been on Ocrivis since that date in 2018. What future do I have?
So, so it's, it's hard to know, because I, I don't have very much information. But what I'm hearing is, this is a person who has a relapsing form of MS. And as the years have gone on, they've had less attacks and they've had progression of disability. And they're on one of the really good medicines. So what, what hopes are there? I think there's a lot of hopes. So we want to do everything we can to optimize that life, all right? To help that person live their best life. And that oftentimes involves in getting them in the best condition possible. So even if they're using a wheelchair, that doesn't mean that they can't exercise and they can't improve their heart and lung function and their arm function. And they can't improve their flexibility and they can't improve their core strength, because they can't. It doesn't mean that they can't work to improve their core balance. And there's a host of things that we can do with physiotherapy and occupational therapy, which pay massive dividends. We can address things like spasticity and weakness. We can address things like bowel and bladder function. And we can make that person more functional and we can improve their quality of life. We can work on nutrition and we can remove sugar. We can remove ultra-processed foods. We can remove sugar-laden foods and fried foods and fast foods and diet foods. And we can adhere to a whole food, single food kind of diet, a very, very healthy anti-inflammatory diet. And we can improve neurological symptoms and improve depression and improve energy. We can adhere to mindfulness in centering ourselves and learning how to manage. Um, we can adhere to mindfulness, um, in centering ourselves and learning how to manage stress. And we can keep the person as healthy as possible while using a medicine like Ocrivis, so that when we do have a breakthrough, when BTK is available, when Clamastan does work, when CAR-T is available, that that person is healthy enough to receive it.
Awesome. Thank you again. Awesome answers. What's the difference between biosimilars and generics?
That's a great question. So, so when you have a small molecule, like a pill, okay? So a pill is a chemical compound made in a laboratory. Um, and that, that pill, like, so I'll use the example of Jelenia. So Jelenia is a medication made by a manufacturer called Novartis. And Jelenia came out in October of 2010. And it was on patent for many, many years. And in 2023, it came off patent. And so this small molecule, Jelenia, is now fair game to make a knockoff. All right. And, um, what a, um, a generic manufacturer will do is they will decipher the chemical compound and they'll make another one, which looks very similar to the first one, that chemical compound. And that's called a generic. So for example, um, and right now there are generics for Jelenia. And they're fingolimod knockoffs or generics. I have a major concern about that. And the reason is when you make a generic, you don't have to test it in humans. So you heard me right. You don't have to test generic Jelenia in a human being. You just have to show the FDA that the chemical compound of your drug and the chemical compound of the branded drug are really, really, really similar. And then you can get it FDA approved. So right now there are generic Jelenias. And it turns out that they don't all work very well. Uh, there's a really cool paper by a good friend of mine named Darren Akuda, who runs, uh, UT Southwestern, one of the best MS centers in the country. Um, and he studied this with his team. And what they found was super disturbing, that these generics don't work as well as the origin or original compound. That's a generic, that's a small molecule. Now, there are other drugs, like we talked about earlier today, like Ocrivis and Briumvi and Kisemtah and Rotuximab and Tyssabri. And these drugs are biologic agents. So they're not small compounds, a chemical compound. They're literally proteins fabricated, uh, in a, grown in a laboratory. Um, and so they're monoclonal antibodies. You have antibodies in your body and these monoclonal antibodies like Tyssabri are, are created. They're grown, um, and they're biologic agents. And you, when, when a biologic agent goes off patent. So, uh, Tyssabri, uh, became FDA available in 2004 and now it's off patent. Another company, um, can make a biosimilar. So we call the first biologic agent, the originator agent. All right, the first one or the reference agent. And then we can make a, a identical biologic agent called a biosimilar. And it's, it's not a generic. It's, it's, um, it's another biologic agent created and it has to be tested in humans, which is why I really like biosimilars a lot more than I like generics. And so in the example of, uh, Tyssabri and the, the generic name is Natalizumab, they made, there's a company that called Sandoz, and they made a biosimilar called Teruko. And Teruko was studied in a clinical trial with people with MS called the Antelope Trial. And they proved, they proved that the drug is as effective and as safe as the originator. And so whereas I have a major problem when a patient of mine was on Jelenia and is put on generic fingolimod, I don't have as big of a problem at all if someone's on Tyssabri and they were placed on a biosimilar, Teruko.
Hey, that was a long answer.
It's a, it's a complex question.
It was, it was. You know, while I got everybody's attention, I just want to, uh, I, I have a lot of questions for you. But while I've got everybody's attention, I want to let people know the 2025 programs that we have. I mean, you talk about all your stuff, but I want to pet, for everything that we do in person, we also do online. So for everybody that's online like today, you could be online for all of our programs that we do in person somewhere else in the country. For instance, this year we're doing three MS symposiums. Last year we only did two. All right, and so we're expanding on that. We're doing a B-cell therapy program that Dr. Boston does not know about yet, but that will be in Columbus, Ohio. All right. Um, yeah, wow, I wonder who's going to be speaking there. All right, we're going to be doing four MS slash NMOSD slash GMG slash MOG programs, which those are the three acronyms are for rare diseases, which many were once known to have been diagnosed with multiple sclerosis and wrongly diagnosed, diagnosed because they may have one of those other diseases, which is why we started doing and making people aware of this. One is called, um, General Myasthenia, Myasthenia gravis, yes. Another one is called Neuromylitis Optica Spectrum Disorder and the other one, MOG. I don't remember what that means. What does that mean?
Myelin oligodendrocyte glycoprotein, um, is, is the MOG, M O G, and then autoimmune disorder. So MoGod.
That's why I can't remember.
Yeah, it's a really long name. So it's, um, it's a cousin of NMO and a cousin of MS.
Right, exactly. And then in addition to that, we're doing, um, we have, um, we have our 12 Compass MS Care Programs in rural American underserved communities. We have, uh, physical therapy online. We have mental wellness online. We have now six town hall meetings that will be happening online. We have our Wellness Summit, our MS Forum, and blah, 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 blah. We're doing another 40 programs next year, live in person, plus the ones that are online virtually. Again, we'll have over 100 programs during the course of the year. So for everybody online, there is something here for you, somewhere in our program. Get registered. Okay? All right, next question, online. Many of us were initially diagnosed with relapse-remitting. Many of us may then age without any more relapses. Are we moving toward SPMS or PPMS? And what is the evidence for change in diagnosis to PPMS or SPMS? And would you typically change a patient's medication if currently on relapse-remitting MS? And I'm going to step away while you answer that, okay?
There.
Thank you.
So, so that's actually a really great question. Um, and it gets into the way that we define and describe disease. The reality is I, I, I don't like any of those definitions at all. Uh, and I think that they do more harm than good. It's my personal opinion that there's probably one kind of MS and it presents differently in different people. So, so as a analogy, uh, I'm an adult male and I'm really short. I'm like 5'5". I'm a real short human, right? There's other adult males that are 6'7". You know, they're huge humans and we're both adult males and, and, and we present differently. And MS can present differently in different people. Now, we, we do use these terms quite a bit. And I, I, I want to make just one distinction. So the way that we describe MS presently, uh, is we talk about relapsing forms of MS. And this would include clinically isolated syndrome, relapsing MS and secondary progressive MS. And then separate from that, we talk about primary progressive MS. So nobody goes from relapsing MS into primary progressive MS. The definition, primary progressive, means they started primarily progressing. And, and so you don't go from relapsing to primary MS. That's not a way that things happen. What can happen is someone, uh, can have what we call relapsing MS and later they can be described as having secondary progressive MS. But something really cool has happened, uh, in the MS space amongst MS neurologists. We are constantly revisiting and updating our diagnostic criteria. And so right now we use a criteria named after the late and great, uh, Dr. Ian McDonald, called the McDonald Criteria. And, uh, it first came out in 2001 and we revised it in 2005 and 2017. Um, I think maybe 2011 before that. And there's a new set of criteria, which have yet to be published. Um, and I think this will be, um, the newest rendition. And this new diagnostic criteria, the revised McDonald Criteria, have the same diagnostic stuff for primary progressive as relapsing MS, which actually is music to my ears, because I think it's, we're starting to realize that those delineations don't make a lot of sense. I also want to point out that one of the most effective drugs that's currently FDA approved to treat MS, one of the B-cell medicines, works to treat relapsing MS and primary progressive MS, which kind of speaks to the fact that we're probably treating the same disease, um, in just different phenotypes. And welcome back to the stage, Stuart.
Thank you very much. All right, next one is, all right, let's go to something else. So how do we fight MS fatigue and what really works? Keep them busy.
So there's a lot of ways of fighting MS fatigue. Um, I've got a lot of YouTube videos on this topic because I think it's a really important one. Uh, and I'll just name a couple. Taking a disease-modifying therapy improves MS fatigue. Every single MS disease-modifying therapy trial, when they do patient report outcome measures, they notice the same thing, that the group that's treated has less fatigue than the group that's not. And so I don't want to underappreciate that. Getting proper sleep is not something, uh, most red-blooded Americans are very good at. So getting at least seven hours of restorative sleep is hard work sometimes. And if we're not getting restorative sleep, we're going to, we're going to be chopping our, our legs off before we even start our day. Um, exercising as part of your lifestyle has been shown time and time again to preserve the neurologic reserve, to slow brain volume loss and to help with fatigue. Removing ultra-processed foods and sugar-laden foods from the diet can improve fatigue. Removing polypharmacy, taking too many medicines and the combinations of medicines, and many of them can contribute to fatigue can help. Um, there are other things that we can do, like treat depression. Because a, a person with undertreated depression will invariably have excessive amounts of fatigue as part of their depression. There's also, um, medicines that we can take and supplements that we can take to improve fatigue. So my point is there's a whole bunch of things that we can do to make fatigue better. And it's not an or, it's an and. And so we can bring all of them to bear to give you as much energy as possible to live your best life despite having MS.
Awesome. Thank you for that. Next one, symptoms. Is it, um, normal for symptoms to only be on one side of the body? Or for instance, uh, tingling, uh, for instance, some people say they sweat on one side of their body, um, which is odd, I don't know how you do that. But, um, uh, for, um, Bell's palsy, that maybe just one side is affected or a drooping eye or something, um, i- is that like the norm?
So, so remember that, um, part of the underpinnings of MS is the immune system is knocking out parts of the nervous system. And the way your nervous system is structured is there's two halves. There's a left and a right half. And there's a left and a right half to your brain. There's a left and a right half to your spinal cord. And depending on where the damage occurs, it could affect both sides or it could affect just one side. And so for example, the base of your brain, which has all the, the, the motors that control the cranial nerves are, is really, there's two, uh, one on each side. And so you can have a trigeminal neuralgia, which is a god awful pain, where you feel like you're being electrocuted on one half of your face. Or you can have a droopy face on one side or a lazy eye on one side. Or, uh, your tongue might not work on one side or the back of your throat may not elevate just on one side. This can happen. Um, I, I, I don't know if it's the norm, uh, but it's not uncommon. And it really has everything to do with the way the nervous system is laid out. Um, if one side of your spinal cord is affected, you're going to have, uh, symptoms on half of your body or part of your body. So it's not uncommon for sure.
Okay, thank you for that. Does, um, are, what's the news, the newest news on repairing myelin?
So we, we've talked about that a little bit already. Uh, and I would simply say that, uh, it's not prime time yet and that there are still ongoing clinical trials, uh, and it's a very, very active area of research. I mentioned a couple hopefuls like Clamastan and Metformin. Um, and, uh, recently in mice, we found this compound, uh, PIPE307 that we're very hopeful about, uh, but we're not there yet. So stay tuned as more research evolves.
Thank you much for that. All right, Zenovo. New MS medication from Genentech that has Ocrivis in it, but there was renamed because it was, uh, it's a new way of, of, um, giving this treatment. Can you tell us about it, please?
Sure. So, uh, so this is not a new medicine. It's an old medicine at this point. It's, it's a B-cell depleter, it's Ocrivis. But Ocrivis is given through the vein, through an IV. And what they did is they repackaged it so that it's infused under the skin. That's called subcutaneous. And so, um, it's the same monoclonal antibody, it's just a different delivery system. Um, and for some patients that might be way worse and for some patients that might be way better. And I would simply say that it's outstanding to have options and choices. Now, this way of giving, um, Ocrivis does not, uh, is not something that you can do at home. It's not safe to do it that way. It needs to be done in an infusion center. So you still go into an infusion center. Um, and it's not instantaneous. It's not like a little shot, like a vaccine and you leave. Um, you know, from setup to breakdown, it's probably at least an hour. Um, but for some patients, that's going to be a wonderful option to consider. And again, I really like, uh, when there are options to be had.
Great, thank you. Uh, will myelin repair be available for everybody?
Don't know yet. Um, that's why we do clinical trials. So, you know, when we do a clinical trial, we start, uh, by studying things before clinical trials in laboratories, in Petri dishes or with mice or sometimes with like other animals like rabbits or monkeys. And then we move into humans. Um, and first in human, uh, we, we talk about, um, what's called a phase one trial, where we test the safety of a drug. I always joke, and poor college kids, we give it to them and see if they blow up. I'm just joking. And if it's deemed to be safe, then we do what's called a phase two trial. And in a phase two trial, they test it in a group of people with the condition of interest, like multiple sclerosis. And again, they're looking at safety in multiple sclerosis. They're looking at which dose to use and they're looking at, um, surrogate markers for success, uh, which might be like an MRI measure. And if it works there in phase two, then they go into phase three. And when you develop your phase two and your phase three program, you start to define in which kinds or phenotypes of MS you're going to test it in. It's my hope that it'll be available to everyone, but we have to see how the clinical trials play out before I can answer that question.
Gosh, you just bit, um, a, a bad thing when you speak to me about clinical trials because I'm in so many ad boards with the pharmaceutical companies about clinical trials. And what they're lacking these days is how do we get more people of color to be more involved with clinical trials? So that way, when new treatments are coming out in the future, that they are more designed for, uh, a larger percentage of people than just one subtype.
That's exactly right. It's, it's about inclusivity. And, you know, one of the number one reasons that, um, ethnic minorities are not in clinical trials is doctors don't ask them, uh, which is a travesty. And I try really, really hard to fight that. I'm very open about that. I will tell the patient that, um, early on in MS, we developed drugs like Avonex, didn't test a single African-American, which is an abomination. That's terrible. And so I want to do my part to try to change that. Um, you know, there are, uh, cultural reasons, uh, terrible, terrible travesties which were committed amongst ethnic minorities in the recent past, like the Tuskegee experiments. And so I think that, um, there's some distrust amongst research, uh, in certain ethnic minorities. And that's a burden that we have to face and admit to. And so I think that collectively talking about it, being open and honest about it and inviting all people to participate in clinical trials, whether they're purple or green or tall or short or what have you, is a really important thing to do. Um, and so I'm delighted that, um, MS manufacturers have started to recognize the importance of inclusivity, um, and the importance of diversity, so that we don't have just a bunch of white men who are involved in clinical trials. We need people of all, uh, all different shapes and sizes so that we can then apply these drugs to people of all different shapes and sizes.
Right, thank you for that. And we're not just talking about, when we say people of color, we're not only talking about the, the black American, we're talking about Hispanics. We're talking about also, we're talking about Native Americans. Um, uh, we're also speaking about Asians, all right? And unfortunately, the numbers are stripped too low for everybody that's not a white person entering these trials. And the only way that they can really make all these medications work in the future is to have more people get involved. By the way, being a white American these days, especially a Jewish white American, makes me an extreme minority, extreme minority. Okay. All right, next, um, so person writes, are there any trials for PPMS besides tolibrutinib? And how can I participate? When and where does Dr. Boston go live? Oh my gosh, that's a tough question.
So a couple of different questions there. So, um, yes, there are many trials for primary progressive MS. Um, I just named one of them that I happen to be involved in, uh, at present. So how do you learn about a clinical trial? Well, one way is you go on the interwebs to clinicaltrials.gov. And that is a, a, um, a website by the American government where all clinical trials have to be posted. So, so you can go to clinicaltrials.gov and you can do searches for primary progressive MS. And you will see where all the primary progressive MS trials are located. Another thing you can do is you can ask, um, if your neurologist is... Another thing you can do is you can ask um, if your neurologist is in an academic center or if your neurologist is um, running uh, MS clinical trials themselves, you can ask the neurologist, what clinical trials are you aware of in this area? Uh, and, and you can be referred to clinical trials. Uh, what else can you do? You can go to some of the MS organizations like the National MS Society. Um, and some of these organizations will have lists uh, of up-to-date clinical trials. And so, so sometimes you have to do a little bit of legwork, but it's worthwhile legwork to do, uh, so that you can figure out where the clinical trials are and which ones are close to you so that you can participate. Um, when do I go live? So I go live um, uh, this Saturday, which is the 21st at 11:00 AM Eastern Standard Time on YouTube. Uh, and I also have a monthly newsletter called The Boster Corner, uh, which you can sign up for, for free on our website. Um, and so you can learn about that.
Okay, thank you. There are too many questions to get through, all of them tonight, because Dr. Boster is getting off here in another five minutes, all right? So um, I just want to let you all know that if your question is not asked tonight, I am not keeping a copy of it. So please make sure that you write down your question and you can bring it online when we're next on again with Dr. Boster in February. Okay, meanwhile, I have an interesting question to ask you and I gotta find where it went again, but uh, just give me a moment. It was a good question. It was very different than ever, anything I've ever seen before. Basically, what it said was that um, you've spoken about people with the down-there problems of not being able to have orgasm. And this person writes, what is there to do for the people that are hypersensitive with orgasm or to the touch? And uh, yeah, so like.
So that's a really, really good question. Um, you know, and, and I, I'm fond of saying, if you want to make an adult really upset, mess with the down-theres. If you want to make an adult upset, give them difficulties with bowel, bladder, or bedroom. And so if we're going to live our best life despite having MS, it's not adequate just to slow the disease down. We have to make sure that we're improving quality of life. And one of the best ways to improve quality of life is to work on the down-theres, bowel, bladder, and bedroom. And so there's all kinds of different bedroom problems that people can have. Um, and sometimes people have a lack of sexual sensation. So when they're touched in the down-theres, they don't feel it. Other people have a different problem called alodinia or dysperonia. And I didn't make these terms up. These are doctor terms. Dysperonia means sexual sensation hurts. And they can be hypersensitive to touch. Now, there's different things that you can do to help with that. For example, there are creams which can dampen sensitivity. And so you can schmear a cream on the down-theres. And it doesn't make the area numb, but it just dampens the sensitivity so they're not so ouchy-ya-ya. Um, there, for example, a gentleman who has hypersensitivity to the penis can sometimes wear a type of condom to decrease sensitivity. There's a bunch of different things that can be done. It starts with a conversation with your doctor. Uh, and, and I think there's no shame in that game. If you're having difficulty with the down-theres, I want you to bring it up to your neurologist. If your neurologist is squeamish, well, first of all, shame on them. But if your neurologist is squeamish, say, okay, that's fine. If you're not able to help me in this specific symptom, I accept that. Please refer me to someone who can. And I would submit that some of the best help out there is by uh, pelvic floor physical therapists and by urologists. And so if you're having trouble with the down-theres and your neurologist isn't uh, helping you adequately, that's a good reason to get another team member and ask to see a pelvic floor physical therapist or a urologist, and they can help a whole bunch.
Okay, thank you. Next, another strange question uh, that has never been asked. And that, it's not, doesn't make it strange, just never been asked, so it's strange. Okay, are there any things we can do to make our veins stronger for infusions? Any tips would be great.
So it's not uncommon that people can have difficulties with venous access. You know, so when you have a Tyssabri or a Teruko infusion, you know, you're spiking a vein 13 times a year. That's a lot of times. Um, if you're getting uh, five days of steroids, that's an IV, five days in a row. Um, if you're having uh, an Okravus infusion, that's, you know, twice a year. So, so um, gaining IV access is, is important. Um, the number one thing that you can do is drink water and electrolytes. And so very often we run around dehydrated. And when you're dehydrated, you literally don't have enough blood volume and it makes your veins collapse. And so um, uh, at the Boster Center for MS, we have a large infusion center. And I have some ninja nurses that are really, really good at IV infusions. And they will tell patients, you need to be drinking things like Gatorade because Gatorade has water and then it has salt in it, these electrolytes. And so you need to be super hydrated before your infusion. You saw me during the course of this last hour, drink one of these. This is the fourth one that I've drank today. Um, why? I'm trying to get myself hydrated. There you go, exactly. What else can you do? Um, heating up the limb can be very, very helpful. And so at the infusion center, we have um, a couple of different devices. We have a hairdryer, really like, and we can, we can warm up the skin that way. We have heated blankets. Um, and we have um, you know, we have uh, like heating pads that you can wrap around your arm to heat your arm up. Sometimes um, eating something sugary can make your veins pop. Um, if you think about like bodybuilders, before they go out and they flex their big muscles and they want their veins to pop, they'll eat something sugary. So there are some tricks and tips that we can use. Also, if you have identified a good vein, let the infusionist know that. Say, hey, this one over here tends to be a really good one. Or if you know that you, they never seem to be able to get it in your hand, say, this doesn't really work when we do this. Um, and I think that the infusionist needs to learn your veins. Um, we'll have patients that come into the infusion center and they ask for a particular infusionist because that particular nurse has learned that person's veins. And together they can work uh, well together so that they can get it on the first stick.
Okay, thank you. Everybody, we are out of time. I promised Dr. Boster would be finished by 8:20 PM. And we are at 8:21 PM. So um, I do have to cut it off right here. The person, this guy has to eat something, he's got to go to bed and he's got to get up early for his, his next workday, okay? So um, we will be back on again with Dr. Boster in February. So if you can, please hold your questions, all right? And uh, and we'll be back. And other than that, I just want to tell everybody that I hope you do have a very safe and prosperous, well, the prosperous new year is for new year. So let me just ask you to have a very safe holiday season, all right? Watch what you drink, watch what you do, and just stay safe and uh, enjoy life, all right? It's too short and make sure you do it well and um, and we'll be back, okay? Dr. Boster, thank you for everything. I'll speak to you later.
As always, we'll talk to you in February. Thanks, guys. Bye-bye.
Thank you. Bye-bye.